Regularly scheduled for a special meeting for Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-three to order. Uh, first order of business is pledge allegiance. Charles, would you lead us once again?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, a couple of items to add to the agenda, first of which is, uh, under, uh, appointments, uh, a Kenneth Pelfrey, uh, for to be the student member of Sustainable Guilford Task Force. Is there a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, the second one is, um, for use of the green, uh, and that is Vista Life Innovations for their annual, um, uh, cycling fundraiser. Um, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second. Let me try your minds. Those, uh, selectmen Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you. All right, public forum. Uh, is anyone from the public there? I don't see anyone, uh, on Zoom nor in the room, so let's move on to item number three, and that's the approval of minutes. Uh, the minutes from August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to do so?
Make the motion.
And the second? Second, uh, any comments, questions, suggested changes?
No.
Uh, hearing none. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
And those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item four, Public Works Director Dave Castro. For that one, consider and take possible action to contract with the Connecticut Seal Coating off the state contract, number twenty PSX zero zero nine two for crack sealing. Dave, good morning.
Good morning.
Talk a little bit about this. I think you mentioned this before, but.
Yes, so we're gonna get away from chip sealing in town.
That'll make a lot of residents happier.
And one of the, uh, alternatives is crack sealing of roads. Um, so I had Connecticut Seal Coating, who's the only contractor on state contract, go look at the roads, and they gave us an estimate for the roads. Um, the estimate is for ninety s-
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty cents, and the roads that they're going to crack seal, uh, just move a little road alone. I mean, that's two point three miles, and they're gonna crack seal that whole road. So it's gonna add a, you know, and a substantial amount of time, life to the road. Um, we're gonna prevent the water from getting into the base. We're gonna get away from reclamation and more into where if we crack seal these roads early, then we can just do like a thin mill or just put a one-inch overlay on top because the base is still solid, and we're saving money in the long run. So.
Dave, just a quick question. What would we have typically spent, uh, spent for chip sealing?
Uh, my budget is a hundred and seventy thousand for the year.
Okay.
And, uh, so this ninety-seven right now, and there are other methods that we can use, um, that we're looking into, but right now I wanna crack seal these roads, especially before the winter. Um, there's fog sealing, which you could do, which is where they spray an emulsion just over the top of the road. It looks black and it's, you know, it seals the cracks, but when you get cracks of substantial size, quarter inch, then you have to crack seal them. You have to fill them with something. So these people, they come in, they remove the vegetation, they blow out the dirt, so it's a clean hole, and then they crack seal it so that it will last.
So getting to the, the, the point, um, we had a hundred and seventy thousand, and is there the capacity to do more crack sealing than you've identified here? Or is this a first, first blush at it?
Well, if we go over a hundred thousand, we have to pay prevailing wage.
Okay.
So at, at their advice, he said, keep it at under a hundred thousand, and we can come back in in April and still use the rest of this money to do more.
Got it.
So that's what we're looking to do.
Great.
So for the people who used to object to the chip sealing.
I think it's worth giving it a try.
Say that again, Charles?
I, uh, I said that I would move it because I, I think it's, uh, you know, to Dave's credit, he's tried, he, he likes to try innovative things, and this, uh, you know, it sounds like another opportunity to, uh, see if we could find a better way.
And is there a second?
I'll second that, and subject this further discussion. Sorry.
Just wondering, what are people going to object to about it? Will it look patchy? Will it be bumpier? Just wondering.
The, the bump is very substantial. You won't feel it. Um.
In substantial.
In substantial.
Right. It, it's, I'm sorry. It's, uh, but we have a lot of it where I live in, and you can't feel it when I ride my bike over. You don't feel it. It's not, it's just there, you know, and it's the, maybe there'll be a little objection to it's a little unsightly at first, but once you get used to it, you don't even notice it, you know, like, so.
Okay, great. Sounds great.
And, and annually, the calls come in and claims come in for car damage to, uh, with chip sealing, so.
Yes.
This hopefully will, uh, eradicate that.
Yes.
I'll tell you this, Charles said once again, uh, innovation, the innovation you've brought to the department is outstanding, so.
Thank you.
Continue to do that kind of thing, so.
I have a quick.
Anything further, Rick?
Yeah. Couple, couple of quick questions. Dave, did, did the company give us, um, their assessment of what, where this makes sense? And, and, and why? In other words, did you say, look, I'd like to do these roads, and did they assess it and say, okay, fine, we think this is fine, it's gonna work? And here's our, here's our report?
Uh, no, I had to actually go through the roads and look at them, and I'm basing it off of, we didn't have a really good, we didn't keep really good records.
Okay.
Uh, so I had to go through the roads, look at them, get some kind of list together as to what roads we paved recently.
Yeah.
Uh, or did any kind of treatment to, and I gave them the roads, and then once they go through them, they estimate how much material they're going to actually use on the roads for the crack sealing.
Right.
And, uh, like I said before, this is just a start. We will still have money left over from, uh, from my budget for treatment of roads that I could do another round in April or May, uh, before the budget season's over.
Right, and are they projecting how long this is likely to preserve, um, the, you know, sort of keep those cracks sealed? Not to use the, the, the name and the definition, but.
Uh, so when you, when you crack seal a road, you can expect anywhere from eight to ten years more life. Uh, I've seen where it actually lasts longer than that. It just depends what's going on with the base, and the quicker we prevent the water from getting to the base, the longer the road will last.
Good?
Okay.
Anything further? All right, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Item five, Town Clerk Anna Dwyer, come on up, Anna.
I feel like I'm on a game show.
Yeah. Consider and take possible action to contract renewal with COT Systems.
Yes, so this is our, uh, hosted, um, services for our land record services. It's also our dog licensing system. It's also our fees system that calculates all the, um, fees, the revenue, um, for the monthly, the finance reports. And it's a five-year contract. It's up for renewal at the end of October. Um, so there is, let's see, the actual monthly hosted, uh, service part of it has actually gone down a bit, um, uh, to nineteen hundred dollars a month. Um, it was two thousand seventy, but the, it all evens out in the end because the uh, microfilming and auditing services, which, um, is based on like pretty much each document or each image. So the microfilming is, um, the new rate is point zero six seven five per image. Uh, and the, on the old contract, it was point zero six, so it's a slight increase on the, in, on the, uh, image, microfilming. And the auditing is, um, increased from point four eight five to point five two. So it just, that's dependent on the number of documents that we, we take in. Right now, you know, things are pretty quiet. We're not, uh, and, you know, it looks like at the moment, if we, oh, and also the, um, because the hosted, the monthly, uh, nineteen eighty, little less than it was, um, last time, but that's because they're not including the, uh, binders in the paper anymore. We have to pay separately for those. So, um, but they average out to be at the moment, we're only filling a book, like maybe it takes a little over a month to fill a book. So that's like maybe twelve a year, you know? It could be like a little bit more if you get busier, could be like fourteen, fifteen a year. But that's like an average. So right now it's been pretty quiet. So I don't really see the, um, fees being too much more than they are right now. Um, and also we do have the option of, you had asked about this, this property check service.
Yes.
For, I, you know, identity or property fraud. Um, so they do offer that. They do offer service for that. I guess they've had it for a very long time. Just nobody really ever asked about it or wanted it because it wasn't really a big thing.
Wasn't a platform scan?
Yeah, it wasn't. So, yeah, so we could sign up for that. We, um, currently the the sign up fee for that, the one-time fee to sign up for that is seven hundred dollars. And then there's a twenty, it's twenty-five dollars a month after that. But we had, would have to, um, sign up by uh, the eighteenth of this month, because after that, it will go up to thirteen hundred dollars for the one-time implementation fee. So I guess it's a hot item, so.
So I think given the, you know, what we've been reading in the papers, this is a nominal amount to protect some of our.
Yeah, and it wouldn't cost, um, it wouldn't cost the, um, you know, any, the public. It wouldn't, yeah. It would just be something they could sign up for. It would just be twenty-five dollars a month on our part.
I'm probably way over my skis here, but, um, I don't know if we have any culpability, does the town government have any culpability, uh, in the source of just misrepresentation by bad actors?
I mean, I don't really think so.
But I, I, quite honestly, I think given the intentions.
I mean, I, I think it's something that people might feel better, you know? I mean, it would be something people would feel good about. You know, if they could, if they had the option to sign up for it, or, you know, it might, it might be something that not everyone would use, but with a few out there that feel, because we have had a few calls, um, about that, I just came about it, so, over the last couple of years. So might be something to consider.
So three hundred dollars, it's a thousand dollars for this, for the.
Yeah, so it's like three hundred a year. Um.
And, uh, this is a one-year agreement or is it multi-year?
So that, no, that was a one-time thing. You sign up for that, and you never have to worry about it again.
Got it.
Um, so, and the, and the twenty-five dollars should never increase. Um.
The nice thing is, we, we can find out if people really want it because we know how many people sign up.
Right, exactly. You will see how many, and then you can see if you wanna continue with it or not, but, you know.
Yeah.
Given the times that we've been, yeah, yeah.
See if Ben Reiner would be interested in doing a story on it, so.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll have, you know, and we'll have Scott put it on the web. We'll put it on our webpage.
Great.
He's really good on that.
Tracing the general webpage.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll get it out there.
Great. Uh, quick question on COT. Uh, was it COT that had a problem a little while ago, or is it the other?
No, it was COT, yeah.
Okay, that, they, they were hacked, or?
They were, yeah, yeah.
But, uh, COT is probably, is, is the leading, uh, system that you state why?
Probably. They always were anyway.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I know there's a number of, there's several of them out there. Um, some of them are not that great. Some of, some towns have their own kind of, you know, homemade. It's just not too good.
They probably have better controls now.
I mean, yeah, we've been using, uh, I wanna say long before I came here. I think since the seventies. So they have a, yeah.
Does it integrate with Munis?
We haven't, I don't think so. We haven't integrated. I don't understand all that, so I'm not really up on it, but we haven't, yeah, we haven't even attempted. Yeah, yeah. Um, we did, I know when we did integrate the whole fee system about ten years ago, it was quite a production, just getting all the reports together and exactly the way the finance office wanted everything, and it was it was a challenge to get it all, uh, everything just the way, um, uh, Sheila wanted it, and now it's there. I'm like, I don't wanna touch it.
I have a question, Matt.
You got it, Lou.
Okay, thanks. Uh, thanks, Anna. Uh, I'm sort of curious, is what you're laying out here seems to me the kind of thing that Town Hall South might be able to use when it comes to permits and other, uh, filings that folks make down there. I, I'm sort of curious if they automatic, if people in town automatically get some sort of email response from there, and I don't think they do, frankly.
No.
And I wonder if that would be helpful for people, or is that more expensive? I mean, am I asking, am I opening up a can of worms, or is that a useful thing?
No, this is basically for land records. I don't think it, it's, it, I don't think they have a system for permits. I don't think they have anything that would apply to permits.
MJ?
I do know that the assessor's office has often asked for access for their purposes.
Well, they can access, they can access the, um.
Is it read-only though? They can?
They can, I believe they can print, they can get, um, what's called, um, oh my God, uh, municipal access or something like that. Um, so we can get, so they can go on the land record system and see like what the public would see, like if they went, um, and it doesn't cost them anything, obviously. It's like, um, you know, it's a municipal thing. Um, so they can check the land records, they can see the, um, and they can see our maps. Um.
I mean, I'll.
As far as permits and stuff, I don't think they.
I'll talk that away for Town Hall South someday when they're with us. I mean, it seems to me there's probably a higher level of communication they could have that currently exists.
They can, they can access the land records, so they can check on like, um, sales properties.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Now I got it.
You know, which, which helps. They don't need to come over here to our office and, and use our computers to see. They can, you know, check it from their own office.
The most frequent use for the Town Hall South folks is GIS, uh, and zoning overlay, all the overlays.
Right.
That's, that's their primary concern, but, um, if they do have access to it, um, you know, remote access is, uh, although I've, I've occasionally seen Barbara from the assessor's office.
Oh, yeah.
In your office.
Oh, yeah. I think sometimes it's just easier to come over and, and look, you know, I mean, they're right there, so they can just come over.
It's a different type of access.
Yeah, it is a different type of access.
I know the assessor's office has spoken to me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, is there a motion to, uh, approve the renewal of the contract with COT Systems? And also to, um, uh, engage COT Systems for the, uh, property, uh, check service?
Yeah, I'll move it. Okay, I'll second.
Yes.
We're a couple of remoters here with, on tape, LA.
No distractions, Jeff.
Any further questions or comments? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Anna.
Oh, thank you.
And, uh, there's a contract in here that I probably have to sign.
Well, I'll get you something.
I figured you would.
I'll get it to you.
Item six, uh, tag team, uh, Mary Jane Malavasini, six dot one, consider and take possible action on extension and expansion of the Rob Nevins Elimination Program.
We're always a duo.
Dynamic duo.
Thank you. Good morning. Um, we're here to see if we can get the board of selectmen to, um, uh, approve or, uh, acknowledge the, uh, Rob Nevins program and see if we can get to continue through, you know, the board of finance, uh, being, uh, the final decision maker of the money, uh, by once again, uh, having money come out of the medical fund. This program has been an overwhelming success. Just this morning, I had a, um, uh, email from Rob Nevins with a audio link fifteen minutes long of him on the radio this weekend with one of our firefighters extolling this uh, program and how this firefighter not only lost a lot of weight and his numbers are down, but so are so many other of our firefighters, and how it's been a tremendous, um, uh, morale booster in the fire department, as well as getting our, our firefighters much better, uh, healthier and better shape, and, and pushing this. And Rob has expanded this to several other towns since, we were not the first, but since Guilford, he's expanded to several other towns, um, continues to hold up, hold this price for us, uh, for a six-month program, which is now his price for a three-month program with other communities, but he's grandfathered us. Um, so what we'd like to do is to, uh, see if we can continue the program, uh, once again, uh, to have, uh, twenty employees from the town side and twenty from the, uh, board of ed side. But we've got a couple of other caveats we wanted to throw at you. One was to see, because there's been requests made, can we extend this to spouses if we have openings beyond the, um, employees? So employees would have first option, but if we did fill the twenty spots in each of the, uh, categories of the town and the board of ed, that we would open it up to spouses, looking at the overall, uh, advantage to having not just our employees, but our employees' spouses to be healthy and, and keep our, our, our own costs down, and also keeping people at work, um, if their spouse is, is, um, is also healthy. Second thing we'd like to do is we've had a request from several employees who say, this has been great, I need to continue this. So, um, most people, if we think, are able to continue the program on their own. Uh, but like many weight loss and, and, and nutrition programs, it's one that, uh, sometimes needs a little, a little push to continue. So we're looking to allow for, uh, up to twenty, uh, employees on each side, once again, to continue the program for a three hundred dollar price for a three-month, uh, extension, and that'd be a one-time thing we would, we would offer. So the total request we're looking at is thirty-six thousand dollars from the medical fund, uh, not to exceed because we don't get everybody, we don't get the number of slots filled up. It would not, uh, cost us that much. So that's the overall. I've given you a letter to that extent. I've also given you four of the several emails, uh, of accolades we've gotten from, from employees that have just been tremendous, um, from people feeling what a great program this has been for them and their, their own personal health, and of course it improves the health of our, our employees, which is always a great thing. We try to do with our wellness programs.
Couple.
I just wanted to add that the board of ed, uh, Linda and Sharon, um, are making this request, same request to the board of education. As usual, with this particular program, we will go to the board of finance as a unified request. So the thirty-six thousand dollars we're looking for is combined board of ed and town, not just the town side.
Got it, got it. Couple of things quickly, uh, as you talked about the spouses, my assumption is, you know, it would only be spouses who are a part of our, uh, healthcare, but this. Are we allowing folks who opt out of insurance to participate in the program?
Yes, we have allowed people who, whether they're in the Anthem program or not, we've allowed them to be in the program. So we figure we just open it up to spouses of those who are or not. If the board wishes to just make it those who are on the Anthem program, that's fine. You know, we're requesting, looking at the overall health of our employees, um. You're right, Matt, the, 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 um, direct cost to the town comes in on those who are on our health, healthcare program. However, we're looking at it just as an overall wellness thing, trying not to pick and choose and look at people saying, well, you're on the program. I can't be on it because I'm, I waive, um, but, you know, certainly, you know, i- it's, it's, it's the town's program with the town board of selectmen, board of finance, and board of education, uh, want approval, we'll go with, but that's our request.
Yeah, 'cause I, uh, thinking is, you know, if your, if your spouse is overweight and unhealthy because of that, and you know, maybe you're taking extra time off, sick time, sick leave, because, yeah, maybe, maybe not, but that's kind of our, our rationale that not only is it making everyone healthy, but the potential of keeping our employees at work. I mean, it might be a little stretched, but that's, you know, kind of what we were, we're thinking, and not trying to make a distinction, uh, one way or the other.
Um, so have we, uh, had applicants that we've had to turn down on this?
Um, it's, it's funny because we've actually been very close on the numbers each time. Um, the first time we did this, there were one or two people that got turned down, and one or two people dropped out or stepped aside for others to go in, so we really hadn't turned anybody down the first time. The second time, the, uh, the town side came a, a couple of people short, um, and the, and the, uh, board side had a couple of people over, and I went to you, and we were able to get those people in. So we've been pretty much right on target, uh, with the numbers. Not sure this time around, I mean, there's been so much more, um, you know, just word of mouth about this, uh, from employee to employee. I'm not sure if we've, we've extended out to the number of employees who would take advantage of it, or whether we've actually, uh, provoked more interest in it from, from employee to employee at this point. So it'd be, I, I think we're gonna be the twenty and twenty, um, once again, probably is a good number, um, but, you know, that's why I wanna extend it out there. And like I said, it's a not to exceed.
Well, given that, given that we've already made the, the decision, uh, to cover the, uh, those who use a waiver, um, I would think spouses would be all right as well, provided that, as your, your caveat, that, uh, there isn't another employee.
Oh, absolutely. The employee.
We would go to employees, employees first, and then if there were spots, we would then open it up to spouses. Yes.
And it just, uh.
And right now, Matt, just to clarify, we, we've also only opened it up to full-time employees at this point. We've not gone beyond the full-time. Thinking once again, it, you know, uh, from the healthcare standpoint, from those who are here every day, uh, we've got the full-time, we might, we've had a couple of requests from some part-time employees, but I said, we're not there yet. Um, you know, we wanted to make sure we were, we're covering those who are the, the, the people here every day, the people who, who are on our plan or we're paying a waiver to, whichever case may be.
All right, just, and then just a quick, uh, checking your math here. You've got twenty-two thousand and twelve thousand for thirty-six. I think that works out to be thirty-four thousand.
You're right. My math is incorrect, so it's not to exceed, thirty-four thousand.
So, let me remind you, so we've done this twice, and each time we approved forty people in total.
Correct.
And it's, it's an, mostly a lifestyle management educational program, thinking that in, in the original period, someone gets the tools that they need to continue on by themselves.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I, I'd certainly be in favor of continuing to offer it the same way we did the first couple of times. As far as expanding it, it just kind of gives the feeling that it was a toe in the door, and now it's just really expanding, and I, I feel like that's not what we intended at the beginning.
Well, we didn't know what we were gonna expect at the beginning, so it kind of was a toe in the door.
Yeah.
It was.
It was experimental a little bit.
Right, yeah, um, you know, so we, we came with, um, the request the first time around. Um, some of us were skeptical of the program. I was, I asked a lot of questions the first time around and put the guy through the wringer a little bit, but, um, you know, it's really, and so we came with that as literally a toe in the door. Uh, this is, we'd like to offer something to help our employees, and, and we wanna try. Um, based on the success that first time around, we ca- we came back again, and, um, success has just blossomed. It, it really has. I mean, I literally had tears in my eyes reading some of the emails that people are sending us, um, you know, from this, um, so I just, I just think it's a, a, a small amount, um, to, for the betterment of our employees, not only are we, uh, goodwill with our employees for offering something like this, um, it, it's really, um, benefiting everyone.
Also, at a time when we've been hard-pressed at, uh, not just, um, uh, attracting new employees, but retaining the employees we have, this has been, I, I think, a great morale booster, and one that people say, hey, the town of Guilford is offering a benefit that, that, uh, is really benefiting them personally, them, them, their family, uh, their health, what, what was more important, um, than, than someone's health. We're actually doing that. And like I say, there's been several other towns that have reached out to me. Like, I reached out to a couple of the towns when we first started this. Now people are reaching out to us, saying, you know, what's this all about, and how's it working? And, and, um, you know, uh, Rob was at our, our health fair, our, you know, and he's, he's been out there for, you know, to, uh, extol, tell people about the program, and he's, he's been so accessible to people. That's the other thing.
Yeah.
This is not one of those things where people say, oh, you signed up for a program, and they send you the bunch of information. He personally talks to each person. He personally talks to each person and sometimes on a, a regular basis, every couple of weeks, check in, he checks in. Make sure you're on the program, um, so it's quite, quite a, quite a.
Let me, let me pick it, what Sue was, I think, getting to, um, I'm familiar with other weight loss programs and. At times in my life, I participated in Weight Watchers, right, but at one point, you know, Weight Watchers seemed to be. Uh, a, a lifelong program, all right, uh, and I know a lot of other people for whom. It has been a lifelong program, is that the expectation with this kind of, with this, is that this is a life, lifetime?
Yeah, it's, it te- teaches you um, how to better manage what, what you're eating. Um, when you eat, how you eat, which eating long term.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, you know, the subscription, once you got to your goal weight with Weight Watchers. Your monthly went down to like fourteen dollars as opposed to thirty dollars or whatever it was.
Uh, this is, right, the goal of this program is not to meet Rob Evans anymore, that's, the, the goal is that you've. Um, got into ha- good habits and, you know, that's really, I believe, the goal. Um, for the, for the program, um, and just. Knowing some of the people in the program from the first time around that are still, you know. We still say, uh, you know, what would Rob Evans say, you know, and that persona has still stayed. In the minds of people that were the first go around, so I know that that um, has, has worked. Maybe not for everybody, you, you know, no program's gonna work for everybody, sure, but, but I hear that often.
Hello?
Hello? So, I appreciate this, you guys have done this and it's always a challenge when you're running something that essentially requires. Ne- negative evidence to prove its, its sort of long term value, in other words, we just don't know who hasn't had. Whatever medical condition potentially that they might have had as a result of sort of improving their eating habits. But there's a general proposition, I think we can all probably accept that it's. It's a helpful thing to get this under control and as MJ said, have better habits and once you're in that, hopefully. It continues um going forward, um. So I think it's really useful and, and I hear Sue's point, that like sort of the concern, it, it can sort of. Something like this could eventually feel like a boondoggle from the outside maybe, but I hear both of you, Mitch and MJ. Saying people are committed to it, they're getting value, in fact, they're sort of clamoring for some more, as long as people are using it. I'm behind backing it, that's my sense.
So my thought would be twofold, one in response to what Lou said, people um, that are actually using it. Assuming we go forward with it, could we find out next time before we go forward again, some more statistics like. Um, you know, you've had X number of people come forward raving about the program, but just, there are also people who signed up, we spent the money on, they did. I mean, what we, I think what we want to do is help the people who want to help themselves.
Right, yeah.
And it seems to me that if someone needs the continuation. Perhaps they didn't do what they were supposed to do and, and it's great that they have an opportunity to continue, but I don't think it's the town's job.
I challenged Rob on that a little bit and his answer was to me was, I didn't, I didn't keep his email with, why do I, but he didn't hit with me. Said like, you know, there's some people that are just at the five yard line and they need more to get over that goal line, they, they, they've uh. They've done this for six months, they've made tremendous progress and they're just need that extra push and he feels, you know, another three months and they'll be on their own. Uh, but that's not everyone, some, some have reached the goal, some, some are very much there. Um, and have developed new habits, like any other, we hear this all the time, like any other weight loss program, if you don't. Keep it up, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna sift back into the, into the uh, the ways you were or, or partly the way you were. Um, do you need to continue it with, with, you know, him yelling at you every couple of weeks, hopefully not. Um, but like, like Mary Jane said, it's, it's a lifestyle change for a lot of people, it's a way of thinking about eating. Um, and I, I've been amazed by the responses, the people that have written about. How they've come off certain medications, how their numbers, they go to their doctor and their doctor's like. Your numbers have not been this good in years and you've gone the right direction and, and it's, it, it's, it's really. Been so beneficial to certain people's lifestyles and, you know, you know, and.
Mitch, but the.
Sorry, Lou?
At, at the Sue's point, if you could reduce that, I mean, without naming names, we don't need to see that, obviously, but I mean, if there's. Twenty applicants and, and we're getting positive feedback from eighteen, and then that's great, if we're only getting positive feedback from eight, that's not as good. I mean, I don't want.
Excuse me, Lou, I'm sorry, we've gotten positive feedback from just about everyone, there's been one or two people that discontinued the program. Um, either because of the, the situation with their own personal life. Or, or they, they actually spoke to their doctor and, and the, the particular doctor didn't, didn't think that was the right program for that one person. But I think, except for the two that I'm aware of, I think everyone else has not only gone through the program, but has benefited from it. And we've, you know, I've got people working right in this town hall who have, have uh, are, are, are fine examples and we've had. Such tremendous success in our police and fire, first, the first round was a number of police officers, the second round has been a number of firefighters. The majority of the people that signed up from the town side were on the uh, the fire department this time and it was, it's just been amazing that the people. Why never hear from, I've gotten some, some very nice emails, uh, just, you know, letting us know what it did for them.
Well, I'm in favor of continuing to offer it, but, but with the extended three month uh time, that doesn't really make any sense to me. I mean, this is saying that fifty percent of the people who signed up didn't accomplish the, didn't take advantage of the opportunity we gave them.
Well, we've had eighty people already go through the program.
Right, so half of them, so we want to continue it for forty?
No, we're only asking for twenty.
No, we're asking twenty on the side, so we are asking for forty, but it was.
Oh, we're asking twenty through sides.
It was, we have, I know of. A co- a handful of people that have asked for it to continue, whether we get forty people that feel they want to continue it or not, I don't know. We just, we just put it out there, we can make it a lower number if you want, I mean.
We haven't had forty people come to us and ask for, ask for it.
Right.
We just kind of put it out there so that it was available, but, okay.
Which may be available, like I said, this is not to exceed, we may not get to the number of people who feel the need to extend.
Right, I'm on the same page, so I think we can support this with it, whatever, you know, data we can pull together, any, uh, you know, uh, even. A survey of everybody who's participated to find out where they are, what, you know, that, that kind of thing, it would be blind, you know, and we don't know who it is. But some kind of survey uh to, to gaze where they are, um, I think you might recall when we first started talking about this, one of the things I asked. About was whether there should be any skin in the game for uh an employee, all right, because that typically. Uh, that, that typically motivates people in a different way, um, and again, so I'll ask the question again. But knowing that I'm willing to go ahead and approve the, you know, the three hundred dollar extension. At some point, does it make sense, you know, the program is a six month program, right, it's supposed to be a six month program. So, uh, going forward, the expectation might be that they'd be, you know, we split fifty fifty with the employee if they're still willing. If they need that other three months.
We had talked about that as possible.
You'll know where that came from in our, in our conversations.
The other thing is, are there repeat, or you anticipate there are gonna be repeat um, employees in the new forty?
No, not at all.
Okay.
No, that is not our intent whatsoever, it would all be. Correct, brand new in the, for the full, full six month program, would, would only be new people. Not people that had been in the program before, for sure.
We talked, Mary Jane and I did talk about the, the quote skin in the game, um, idea, we came back to the same. Conclusion we did the first time around, you know, is it something where, you know. Someone says, well, I can't afford it or I can't do this, or, you know, are we, are we, you know, we pick and choose. You know, we do, or just say, yes, you gotta pay half, we gotta pay a hundred dollars uh to continue, we could do that, but it's an all accounting situation too.
Yeah.
Um, we hadn't tried this yet, so if we, we come out and ask you to see if you would support it.
Okay, well, uh, is there a motion to approve uh the recommendation? Uh, by the two, which uh would be forty new participants at five fifty and forty uh exist, uh existing participants on an extension. For a three hundred each for a total of thirty four thousand dollars. So.
I'll move it.
The motion, yep, second. I'll second the motion, um, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Second Federici.
Aye.
Second Haberda.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Don't make me do this.
You want him staying?
No, uh, that's a cowardly uh reaction.
Aye for me.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will definitely work on having some data next time, if, 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 we can work on the data.
Right.
Yeah.
For the participants that have already gone through the program and present that to you.
Right, and, and does Rob Evans have any metrics that he can share?
Yep, I'm sure he can.
That's, that's where we would start.
Yeah, he was very willing to come this morning, I didn't feel he needed to, to here, but um, he was willing to come this morning or anytime he wanted to be with him personally. He's, he's very open to that.
Can, can we just give the message that the town wants to support the employee health and it's a six month program and. People need to make sure that they get it in six months and that we're not gonna support the extension next time.
Right, and this, this won't, absolutely, and this won't be on the board of finance agenda un- until the, the end of the month, so. Maybe we can put the metrics together and have it for your meeting that morning, um, before we move forward to the board of finance, just so. Maybe, maybe, or maybe not, give you um, a, a better feel.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, we'll give it a shot, we'll see what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item seven, appointments and resignations, seven dot one, act on the resignation of Ramona Byrne from the Gilbert Lakes Golf Course. Uh, is there a motion with appreciation and regret, thank you, Lou?
Appreciate your regret.
Second, second. Thank you, let me try your minds, second Federici.
Aye.
Second Haberda.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, seven dot two, act on a recommendation to reappoint Jody Lang to the Human Rights Commission for a team to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Is there a motion?
Some would.
So, is there a second?
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, second Federici.
Aye.
Second Haberda.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, seven dot three, act on a recommendation to appoint Thomas McCabe as an alternate to the Historic District Commission. To fill a vacancy for a term that expired January thirty first, twenty twenty seven, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second. Uh, let me try your minds, second Federici.
Aye.
Second Haberda.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously, uh, seven dot four, which is the addition to the agenda, is to appoint Kenneth Pelfrey. Uh, as a student member of Sustainable Guilford Task Force, is there a motion?
Some would.
And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Charles, uh, let me try your minds, uh, second Federici.
Aye.
Second Haberda.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, eight, the use of town, uh, request for use of town property, eight dot one, act on a request from the Gilbert Dock Center to use the green. July nineteen, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty four for its craft expo, is there a motion?
You make the motion.
And, and a second from Charles, let me try your minds, second Federici.
Aye.
Second Haberda.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Eight dot two, act on a request from, in a heartbeat, to use the green on September sixteenth, twenty twenty three for its CPR. AFD demonstration pop up, um, is there a motion?
I'll move it.
And a second?
Second.
Second, let me uh, try your minds, second Federici.
Aye.
Uh, second Haberda.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. I think In a Heartbeat is uh, an organization, a nonprofit that is. Um, run by one of the Defibtech employees, right? And actually, young man, he had basketball, he's actually a basketball coach, he had, he had a, a cardiac arrest. And uh, uh, up at a gym in Wallingford years ago and they had a, a defibrillator there, saved his, saved his life. And now that's what he's doing for a living, so. Uh, eight dot three, act on a request from the country schools, place a sign on the green, advertising its open house taking place October twenty second, twenty twenty three. Is, is there a motion?
Some would.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, let me try your minds, uh, second Federici.
Aye.
Second Haberda.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries, eight dot four, act on a request from St. John's Episcopal Church to place a sign on the green, advertising its craft fair taking place October twenty one, twenty twenty three. Is there a mo- motion?
Make the motion.
Thanks, Lou, and a second?
Second.
Second, let me try my second Federici.
Aye.
Second Haberda.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, uh, eight dot five, act on a request from the Cove to place a sign on the green, advertising the annual run for the Cove. Taking place October fifteenth, twenty twenty three, sign placement ten one to ten fifteen, is there a mo-?
Some would.
And a second?
Second.
We're trying my, second Federici.
Up the gun, aye.
Second Haberda.
Aye.
It's ironic on a running, on a running application.
And those in the room, aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, uh, eight dot six, act on a request from. Uh, Herb Schwartz to place an animal display on the green, September eleventh to seventeenth, twenty twenty three, to benefit the Guilford Animal Shelter. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
And a second?
I'll second.
Second, let me try your minds, uh, second Federici.
Aye.
The second Haberda.
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye. And there goes anonymity.
Yeah, but it's nice to bring them into conformity.
Yeah, that's uh.
I assumed when I made the motion, when they said animal, that was the, the characters.
And so basically now it would be similar to what's happened in the past, he would post those things, they'd sell them off, people would make a bid.
Yeah.
I mean, that's really, there's a certain symmetry to that proposal that works well, and I mean, I've seen any number of people. Be near that, bu- by those previous displays and people love them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Charles is right, it's good to have it on the, on the, in the process.
Guilford Animal Shelter, is that, um, does that refer to our own, the animal control facility, okay?
For enhancement, so what we do there.
Great, great, great.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, that motion, okay, we've already had the vote, um, committee reports, um. Uh, Sandy's not here, um, and I won't belabor the, uh, the efforts that they are making to put together the. Um, Affordable Housing Committee, the offo- the official one, as well as the trust fund, I, I've seen emails going back and forth between Pete Barrett. Uh, Christie Rubenstein and Sandy over that process, so it's, it's, it's underway. Okay, correspondence, anybody have anything under correspondence? Um, hearing none, uh, oh wait, wait, we forgot. The Vista Life Innovations, I forgot to add that. Six, uh, uh, eight dot seven, um, is there a motion to approve? Uh, the use of the green to Vista Life in, uh, in innovations as part of their uh, uh. Cycling fundraiser, uh, and it would be a rest stop, um, and they will have, they will bring. Uh, sanitary, uh, necessary sanitary facilities. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Any uh, comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try my second Federici.
Aye.
Second Haberda.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries, okay, sorry about that, going out of order. All right, uh, correspondence, anybody have anything, correspondence, I didn't have anything, no, uh, just like usual. Um, so. Um, all business, just one uh, update for you folks. At our last meeting, we talked about the uh, interesting phone conversation I had with the deputy director at Department of Housing around the Affordable Housing. Initiative for uh. Sawmill Road, uh, we had a, a site walk, a subsequent site walk, uh, with representatives from the Department of Housing. And um. I indicated to um, Miguel Rivera, the deputy director, uh, in a, a subsequent phone call. That we'd be interested in proceeding down the track of having us foregoing the CDBG money, uh, and utilizing state bond money. And he once again confirmed uh, that this is a process that will allow. Uh, the two units that were unable to be built uh, by Green Planet to be built. And this is gonna turn into a three way partnership between, uh, it's an extension of the Department of Housing's funding for Green Planet. Uh, but uh, it would come through, come through to uh, uh, with Guilford as a managing entity, so. Uh, so it works, I think it works out well, uh, and I, I learned in that call. That this was actually the commissioner's idea, the commissioner, I don't know if you recall, but the commissioner, uh, when she first got into Affordable Housing. Her first project was the Apple Tree Lane, uh, Hubbard, Hubbard Wood Road, Hubbard Woods uh, development and. She is, uh, she's been a strong supporter of uh, the Green Planet, uh, it actually came down to a, you know, a, a press conference. And, and, and a ribbon. Uh, it actually came down to a, you know, a, a press conference and, and, and a ribbon cutting here. And she's also a supporter of the winter property, Affordable Housing Company, so. That's just an update, anybody else with all business?
I had a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base, uh, uh, I saw the article regarding the, uh, Grass Island Shack and everything, and I, is there anything official or who, what department is actually keeping an eye on that, 'cause the erosion is apparently becoming problematic?
It is right, right now, the, uh, the lead on that is Janice Plaziac, uh, because it involved, anything we do there will, will involve permitting with DEP, uh.
Yeah.
If, even.
Well, I knew that and everything, I just wanted, you know, we are watching it being proactive at this point.
Oh, we are, we are, we're actively working with DEP to determine what our options are. We had proposed moving it ninety feet back, uh, they've already done, uh, a, a, done a review of there are no endangered species, uh, that would be, uh, that, that would be troubled as a result of moving it back ninety feet. The other alternative, uh, as you may have seen in the article, was to play, put more sand or fill in that area. But it's, it's a, it's a changing, uh, peninsula at this point, um, so I think getting it back would be, uh, the most effective way. And then the question is, what can we use for pilings if we move it back? Uh, because, you know, in seventy years or something, uh, we don't know what it's gonna look like. My, my suspicion is, though, in, in seventy years, that's gonna be a real island, um, because they have, they have, you know, sometimes flooding issues on, uh, that, the end of that road there.
I'm just wondering what, if that other cut will, will affect the flow, because I remember when it first started, uh, eroding badly, and it was simply because, uh, you know, one of the dredge tugs got parked in the wrong place and redirected everything, and I'm wondering if that new cut that they're putting in will affect the flow there. I, I think to your point, we gotta wait and see what Mother Nature decides.
Yeah. But DEP seems, uh, very amenable upfront, uh, on doing something to save it, uh.
All right, we're watching it, that's all, 'cause, you know, we're getting plenty of inquiries on it.
Got it.
Yeah. I'm curious about, uh, the Boy Scouts' use of green, which we approved last time without knowing exactly what they were planning on doing.
Lou, did you get a chance to follow up with them?
I did not, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
When is the event taking place? Do we remember, Trey? Wait, we got the minutes, right?
Yeah, yeah, it should be in the minutes.
Sign placement nine twenty-three to ten seven, so.
Only before that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll meet before.
Eighteen percent, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make some calls.
Great, thanks, Lou. Okay, anything else? No, public forum? Um, no one from the public? With that, online retention, which is.
Make a motion.
And a second? Second, so.
Second.
You're in, thank you, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.